Good evening, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being May 9th, 2017. It's great to be here at our Higgins Middle School library. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by the PB school committee's recording secretary, Marge Macarelli. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first, if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. And I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Levine who's going to be introducing two of our wonderful students from the Brown School today. Dr. Levine?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Outstanding students from the Brown School today. First is Tyler Guidi. Tyler is a grade one student in Mrs. O'Phillies class. He likes to run, ride his bike, and go in his pool. He has one brother and one sister, and his favorite subject in school is math. He likes to play soccer, and he likes to read. His favorite color is blue. So come on up, Tyler. Stand right over here with the mayor. Kate Bresnahan is a student, a fourth grade student in Mrs. Vinagro's class. She plays softball and is a member of the Environmental Eagles, which I think is really cool. And she is also a member of Destination Imagination. She has two sisters and her favorite subject in school is writing, and her favorite color is also blue. Welcome, come on up. If everybody would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Metropolis, for being here as well. It's great to have the Brown School represented. They do an outstanding job at that school. There's no objection, I'd like to go out of order a little bit. We do have some amazing students here as well that we want to recognize, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Levine for some introductions.
Thank you. As you all remember, Janie Wilson last year was the grand prize winner for the Uncle Ben's Beginners Contest at the McCarthy School. She won $30,000 for the McCarthy School last year, and she's at it again, making us famous. And I'd like to introduce her now. She's going to be a presenter at the Partnership for a Healthy America. And this will take place in Washington DC and it's part of the Mars Corporation. Janie is going to be on a panel of noted speakers, including Michelle Obama, Bill Clinton, Gabriel Union, and my favorite, Cindy Crawford. And if you need a superintendent chaperone, I'll be glad to go with you. Janie will be part of a breakout session with Patti Ginnich, who is a chef and PBS TV host and cookbook author, and Fatima Dalau from Sheerah Strength Cooking Matters. The moderator for her session is Linia Floyd from Family Circle Magazine. So we've invited Janie to come tonight to just tell us a little bit about her experience, and we welcome her. Janie? Come right up here to the microphone.
Well, it's nice to see you all today, and I'm really excited to be back. Since I was here last in fifth grade after winning the Uncle Ben's Contest, I was on Chop Junior on Food Network. I filmed another show for FYI called Stove Tots. I filmed two Uncle Ben's commercials, one being with Kelly Rowland from Destiny's Child. I was on the cover of Chop Chop Magazine, and I also served on their kids advisory board. And I also filmed a bunch of episodes for my own cooking TV show called The Three Jays in That Guy's Kitchen on PBAXIS Television. And I'm really excited to be leaving tomorrow to go to Washington DC, to be speaking there with a bunch of amazing people that I can't believe that I'm going to be able to meet. It's crazy to really think about it. And I'm just really happy that I'm going to be able to further my message and say like how kids should really get into the kitchen, because it really brings their families together. And especially being with like the fast-paced world that we live in today, always on our devices, we really need to disconnect from them and reconnect with our families, having real conversations with real people. That's just one thing.
Well, hold on, Janie, hold on.
The mayor has a presentation for you.
So I am, and I'm very fortunate, I've gotten to know Janie over the last few years, and she is just a wonderful student, a wonderful person. Her mom's here today with her wonderful family. Not only has she had incredible success in the kitchen, but she is an excellent student here at the Higgins, and she's also an excellent basketball player. But with all her success, she's very humble, and she's very hardworking, and I think there's just going to be nothing but success in Janie's future. It's wonderful to have her here today so we can provide to you a certificate of recognition from the City of PBID for your participation as a breakout session speaker with Partnership for a Healthy America 2017 Summit. We trust that this certificate of recognition will serve as a lasting memento for your continued success in all of your endeavors. And I'm very proud to present this to Janie on behalf of all of us here at the school.
And Janie, I have a note for you to give to Cindy. So, Mr. Mayor, we've had, first of all, I'd just like to editorialize just a bit. Everybody knows that we have outstanding teachers throughout our school system. Our classroom teachers are second to none. We have some outstanding departments as well, not just academic, but we have some terrific, terrifically talented people, kids and teachers, that work together every day to produce things that, quite frankly, I don't have the skill to produce. We have a wonderful performing arts department, we have a wonderful drama department, and we have a fabulous art department. And I've had the privilege of being up in the art classes every now and again. My mother was a painter, she was excellent at that. I did not get that gene, but I do admire anybody that has that skill. These kids that are with us tonight, these fine young ladies participated, were chosen to participate in the Hunt photo contest. So this is photography. We offer so much at PBID High School and throughout the PBID public schools for our kids to be able to explore. Some things they won't like, and that's good too, because that's a learning experience, and other things they will grab onto and love the rest of their lives. I believe these kids will certainly love this, using this skill throughout their lives. Participating in the Hunt photo contest and being recognized for her, and this is the school pride competition, by the way, for her camera double exposure, I'd like to invite Olivia Kilbright up. And maybe you could show us, and show the camera, Olivia. Wonderfully talented, and would you like to tell us just a little bit about yourself and how you got involved in photography? Come right around here and take a seat.
So freshman year, I signed up for photo, not really sure what it was going to be, but I turned out I really liked it, so I took a lot of photographs. And so in my picture, I used a girl and then my friend taking a picture.
Great. That's a wonderful job. And the mayor has a presentation for you. Thank you so much.
Well, congratulations, Olivia, and I'm very proud to present this certificate of recognition from the City of PBID and all of us on the school committee in recognition of your participation and success in the Hunt photo contest school pride competition. We trust that this certificate of recognition will serve as a lasting memento of your pride in the PBID schools and the pride we have in your accomplishment. Congratulations, Olivia.
Also participating in the Hunt photo contest annual school pride competition is Robert Price, United We Stand. And is he?
Roberta.
I'm sorry, Roberta.
But I have repeat.
Okay, could you show it to us, please? That's great, thank you.
So Katie Millman, the head of the art department.
You need a microphone, sure. I'm Katie Millman, the head of the art department and also Roberta's teacher. So she was most proud of the diversity at PBMHS and all of the different clubs that we have and all of the diverse students that are enrolled in our school. And so she wanted to symbolize that within her piece, and she was chosen as one of the finalists for the Hunt's photo competition.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Millman, if you could please present this to Roberta on our behalf, it's a great accomplishment.
And finally, we have another young lady who participated in the Hunt photo contest annual school pride, and her, the title of her presentation is Books, and she happened to win first place. So we would like to invite Diana Caboni up. Diana?
So I did my project, obviously it was on school pride, and something that I'm super proud of our school, besides our amazing art program, is our library. And I know that sounds kind of silly to be proud of a library at a school, but when I first came to PBID High School, our library was not the greatest. You didn't go there, you only went there if your teacher made you go there. And now it's someplace where you feel completely welcome to be there. And our new librarian has really taken it over and made it her own. And it's really a great place. People go there on lunch, and you can eat your lunch there, and it really is such a great place. What she's changed and done. So that's, I took the books and...
That's great, thank you so much.
Diana, congratulations, and thank you for your words, that was terrific to hear. But in recognition of your first place award in the Hunt photo contest, the school pride competition, we, the PBID public school community and the City of PBID, present you this certificate of recognition to serve as a lasting memento of your pride in our school and our pride in you for your accomplishment. So congratulations, Diana. This is fun, I love giving out awards. This is fun. If there's no objection, and it isn't on the agenda, but I invited a special young lady to our committee meeting tonight, and I wanted to ask Lena Hutchinson, please, Lena, come on up here for a moment. I met Elena last year when I went over to the Carroll School. She was a fifth grade student. I met her at an event, and she told me about something amazing that she was going to be doing. I'm going to let her speak to it, but she is going to be doing it again this year for, among the most important causes that you can have. And I wanted to invite her tonight to speak about what she is going to be doing, her dedication and devotion to this cause, and I wanted her to speak briefly about what she's going to be doing and open it up if there are any questions. But Elena, it's great to have you here, sixth grade student here at the Higgins Middle School, just a wonderful young lady who I've gotten to know a little bit. Elena, please tell us what your plan is.
Okay, so I am shaving my hair for kids with cancer, and it's a really good cause. I'm also getting donations, so raising money for these kids with cancer, and that goes towards like events for them and like to have parties for them. And the shaving your hair part makes wigs for these kids, so if they want them, they can have hair and feel like, so since they lost their hair, they can have hair that people donated.
Okay. And Elena, can you tell us when you're going to be doing that, where it takes place?
I am doing the Buzz Off on June 4th this year at Gillette Stadium.
Great. And Elena mentioned a website, I did want to mention that website, and I'm also going to put it on the PAT so that can be read, but it is www-onemissionbuzzoff.org/crazydaisy. Now, is that you, Crazy Daisy?
Yeah.
Excellent. And I didn't know if there were any questions for Elena, but it takes a very special person to do what she's doing, and this is her second year making this commitment for a tremendous cause, and I wanted that to be honored and invite her tonight. So we can give a round of applause to Elena.
Elena, I'd like to make a contribution on behalf of the school department, it's really on behalf of me. There you go. Before you leave here, other people, especially Mr. Hockman over there, he should be making a presentation as well. Dig in.
Well, that's great, thank you, Dr. Levine. And Elena, I wanted to make a pledge to you that June 4th, after you have your head shaved, if you come back to the school committee, you can shave my head. And you can do that, okay? All right? So we will, if you'd like to do that, we can have you come back here, and I'm sure my daughters will like to be at that as well. So I'm going to let you shave my head after your June 4th, when you do your Buzz Off, okay? Any questions or anything for Elena? This is done?
I think you're wonderful. That is absolutely one of the best things you can do for the kids, because you know they're going to want to have a wig if they lose their hair, and that takes a lot of courage on your part, and it's going to mean a lot to a lot of other people who are probably around your age. So thank you for doing that.
And Elena's parents are here, and I wanted to recognize them, Patricia and Joe, John? Patricia and John, where are they? There you are. Thank you. Thank you, Elena. All right, that's terrific. So if there's no objection, I know we have a number of people here today to discuss our science curriculum. There's no objection, maybe we can go to that presentation now? And Dr. Levine, did you want to make any introductions?
Sure. Through the great work of Assistant Superintendent Murtagh and her tremendous committee of over 30 teachers and administrators, two years' worth of work has come to culmination tonight in our presentation of our recommendation for the new science resources that the mayor has so generously funded through the capital plan. So I would turn this over to, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I would turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Murtagh.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. First and foremost, thank you, Mayor and school committee, for supporting us in our science journey. We had a very talented group of over 30 teachers and administrators, like Dr. Levine said, on our science team. We also had 25 teachers throughout the district, grades K through 5, that piloted two programs for the whole entire year. The team, after much thoughtful discussion, is recommending FOS to you. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Brian Gosic, Diane Patika, and Roxanne Dupuy to give a presentation on FOS, the online resources, the investigations, and how this evidence-based program is going to support our students in 21st century growth and learning in science. So these are representatives from FOS science.
Thank you, Ms. Montag.
Also, I wanted to recognize Elaine Metropolis, Jackie Orfanos, Jill Holden, Michelle Eugenio, and Jocelyn Sullivan, who are all a part of our science team and that are here tonight as well.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of Brian and Roxanne, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight. We are thrilled to have been selected... Oh, I'm sorry. We are thrilled to have been selected by the Science Adoption Committee. Over the past eight months, we have had the opportunity to participate in the adoption process, to work with Kara and the Science Committee, and to spend time with the teachers in their classrooms modeling lessons. Peabody and FOS share a common philosophy. That FOS philosophy is that we're not just a program, it's a philosophy of learning and teaching. Like you, we believe that children learn best by doing science through active investigations. This is informed by a cycle of embedded assessments, both formative and substantive. And we are committed to partnering with Peabodys through thoughtful planning, effective implementation, and ongoing district support. FOS was first developed in 20, over 20 years ago, at the Lawrence Hall of Science, using NSF-funded research. FOS has evolved to meet the current national science standards and it's aligned with the Massachusetts Science and Engineering Standards, which were adopted last year. FOS is embraced nationally by over 20,000 schools across the country. FOS is the result of testing and feedback from teachers across the country.
So we all agree that hands-on is the best way to learn science, and FOS embraces that through their active investigation, which is at the heart of their science pedagogy. However, there's also, the active investigation is not the only part of FOS. FOS leverages student notebooks. Here's an example, where student notebooks are there to create a powerful opportunity for students to reinforce new vocabulary. An example of what you might see in a student notebook sample, where they continually build on that knowledge as they gain additional information. Another component of the FOS pedagogy is language development. Using these connections between science and language arts, students are able to read, write, and discuss their experiences through whole-class discussions, speaking and listening in collaborative groups, or in small group pairs. A third component of the FOS pedagogy is the reading informational texts, where students are able to dig deeply into the informational texts to expand their learning that they receive through the active investigations. These FOS science resources relate the content to the students' experiences and include articles, questions, and career connections. The resources, books, they provide students with regular interactions with content-rich science nonfiction text. Another component is the online activities. They provide places for students to apply their knowledge from each of the investigations, and these are available for both students and teachers. Some of the online technology is in digital format that is tablet-compatible, and it works with anything from iPads to laptops to smartboards. There's quick intuitive navigation, so that teachers can easily and quickly find the support that they need, from videos to virtual investigations, and they're directly linked at a point of sale, or excuse me, at a point of use. For students, there's also flexible display that allows them to view sections electronically, from videos to interactions, to embedded videos, to virtual investigations, to simulations. Outdoor plays a key role in the FOS pedagogy. This allows for students to transfer the knowledge that they've learned in the classroom in order to bring the natural world and the classroom to help find that balance between the two. The final component is a FOS formative assessment, which is a powerful cycle of formative assessment to ensure the success of students.
Throughout the adoption process, it was very important to Ms. Montag and the Science Committee that FOS would be sustainable and that all teachers would have their own equipment and materials to teach science to every student in every classroom. The grade-level kits are designed for that exact purpose. The grade-level kit allows all teachers to have all equipment, teaching materials, consumables for every student in their classroom for three years. A refill kit is the only thing that you'll need to replace, and that's replaced in year four and in year seven. Also, the grade-level kit saves space, there's no duplication of equipment. By having each of the classroom teachers have their own classroom kit, they'll be able to cover the same content at the same time. This is critical for effective implementation and teacher collaboration.
As you know, professional development is key to a successful implementation, and we look forward to a long-term partnership with you. It begins with planning, where we can help you set clear goals and build a customized plan for your school that not only works for your district, but also to help meet the specific needs of your teachers. It continues with effective implementation, where we offer face-to-face workshops, FOS material teaching, teaching strategies, instructional designs, and specific strategies to meet the classroom needs. And finally, sustainability is key in order to continue that ongoing support. We can develop teacher leadership, network, and other opportunities in order for you to maintain a successful implementation. Next, you're going to see a series of pictures of some actual professional development that's taken place, and as you can see, just like students learn from hands-on, teachers also learn from hands-on. They dive deep into the investigation, they make sense of the content, and they're right there in there, learning the different investigations that students would learn. They're collaborating, building, engineering. We ask them to write notebooks, just like we ask the students.
We are offering Peabody to be a lighthouse program of distinction. And what that means is that you will receive some additional services, such as assigned specialists, as you do your implementation, you'll have a contact person inside. We will also provide some hands-on support with the kits when they're delivered, so they're ready for the PD that will happen in August, and also ready for the classrooms in September. We will also be providing some ongoing professional learning. We'll continue to do some mentoring in the classroom like we did last winter, we'll do grade-level meetings. I will be attending the monthly class, the monthly grade-level meetings, and the great thing about that is all the teachers will be teaching the same content, so when we're there, it'll be very specific. And if at that point we determine there's more PD that needs to be provided, then they'll contact Roxanne, and she'll go ahead and do that with us. As part of the lighthouse program, your district will work jointly with us to co-host workshops, and those will be for schools in the areas that may want to know what you're doing here and want to know more about FOS, and also to co-host classroom visits. I have had districts asked to go into a classroom and see and observe it being taught. Peabody and FOS... PEBODY and FAWS shares a common vision. And we know that we have just begun our partnership, and the work has just only begun. But we share that vision. And the vision that we share is that your students will win, your teachers will win, and PEBODY community wins with a STEM-ready workforce. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diana and Roxanne, and Brian. So at this time, through the chair, some questions?
Ms. Murtagh?
Yes.
Could you just have one, two, or all of your teachers who are here and served on that committee, could they maybe speak to the process for just a minute? And the time that was invested, and why it is that FAWS was chosen?
Sure. And one other person, Mrs. Beulah popped in, and I missed her, so Mrs. Beulah from the Brown is here as well. So please come on up, Mrs. Beulah, please, Mr. Rockwell, anybody?
So I can talk to you a little bit about the process, which was a very open process with teachers on the committee, principals on the committee. And we were very fortunate that Ms. Murtagh allowed everybody on the committee to have opportunities to ask questions, to seek out new knowledge about it, to have an opinion, express their opinions freely. So I think we all, I think every one of us on that committee felt like we were heard and that our opinions were valued. I just want to tell one quick little story. We were at my school, at the Brown School, and Roxanne came in to do a model lesson in a kindergarten classroom. So of course, I ran down there, I was all excited. I had heard about the program, but I hadn't really seen it in action. Well, Roxanne came in, kind of like she's dressed tonight. Roxanne, come up here so we can see how perfectly attired and professional. She had a little skirt on, and everything was just immaculate. By the time she finished teaching her lesson, her shirt was out, her ponytail... She immersed herself in this lesson. She was down on the floor with the kids, she was, you know... And this is what we want our teachers to be doing as well. As she mentioned, the teachers are learning along with the children, and it's a very hands-on program. So I really appreciated the opportunity that FAWS gave us to have the people come in and actually do model lessons for our teachers. It was really great. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Latrell, Mrs. Holden's going to talk about her experience in the classroom. Mrs. Holden was one of the pilot classrooms.
Thank you. I teach second grade at the Welch School, and having the opportunity to pilot the program was great. I spoke out at several of the meetings, just saying how wonderful it was that all the kids really were successful with the program because it was so hands-on. The Welch School has a population of 33% ELL students, and students that literally just came here from Brazil and weren't speaking English yet, or doing the experiments, and able to explain in Portuguese what they did to their classmates, and then their classmates trans... you know, I'm losing the word right now. They were able to explain back to me exactly what they were supposed to learn. So I thought that was fabulous. Roxanne was very instrumental in helping me with the notebooks as well. They can have pictures, they can label, they can use their writing to express their thoughts. So that's also great for the ELL students, that they were able to write and draw pictures. Just the other day, actually, and I've said it to Kara as well, the information is transferring over to other areas as well, to social studies. They had a picture of a cliff in Europe. It was a castle, and half the castle had collapsed into the water. And several of the students were like, "Well, that's because of this weathering of the rocks, and it caused, you know, the erosion in the castle to fall into the ocean." So you're hearing it different ways, and just the other day, Roxanne liked this example as well. We were reading a story with honey in it, and one of the kids said, "Honey is a viscous liquid." And that was the lesson that Roxanne taught in the classroom, so... It's definitely transferring over, and it was a wonderful learning experience for me as well as all of the students. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mrs. Sullivan is from South School Assistant Principal and also a special educator, and she's going to speak on that.
So having a very special, a very strong special education background, I can't say enough great things about FAWS. I think the fact that it's hands-on hits all students, like Ms. Holden had said about the ELL students. Our special education students also benefit from that as well. I think it's also really great that this program officially moves away from workbooks and write-in textbooks, and it uses the notebooks, where students are writing at their own level. So they're not all being asked to answer the same exact questions in the same amount of space. You know, if you want to write more, if you are able to write less, put it in your own words and use the space that you need. They're creating these notebooks that I think really match their individual levels and styles and their abilities to answer those questions. So if you have a struggling student who's a special education student or an ELL student who can draw out a picture to explain their understanding, they can do that because it's not a workbook with several lines for you to answer the questions, so... And I also think that it's more open-ended in that asking questions, and it really is encouraging more of a 21st century student, like really thinking outside the box and pushing them beyond those original boundaries of those workbooks, you know, that we used for so, so long. So I really think it's a revolutionary program, and it really encourages thinking outside the box and reaching every student at their level.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Mrs. Beulah, fifth grade across the district is departmentalized, so Mrs. Beulah's going to talk on that. So she teaches science to all fifth-grade students at the Brown School.
Hi, everyone. So this has been a fabulous program for my fifth graders. We have a lot of special needs students at the Brown School, and what's been fabulous about this program is I can have students of all levels, and they all do the same thing, and they're able to get all different things out of it, but they can do the same activities in the same classroom. So I brought some notebooks, and you can see that they're loved by my students. Some kids are on a second notebook, but the kids can do all the activities together, so I can group them together. And it all depends on how they work their activities out. So the higher students really have in-depth the way they write about it, where the lower-level students can still get a lot out of it, but there's a special needs students book out there, and you really can't help the difference. They really do so fabulous with this program. So the kids really enjoy it. There's a lot of hands-on, as you said, but there's also a lot of ELA out there in there, and it tells you how to do it. It's step-by-step, so a new teacher's able to fall right in if you need a lot of support. But if you don't need it, it's there. It's been really great for my kids. They really enjoy it. They always say, you know, "What are we going to do today?" And there's a lot of video support if you need it for the teachers, as well as the kids to watch as well. So it's been fabulous. Thank you.
Mrs. Orfanos is going to speak from a teacher perspective and administrative perspective.
So my school, we were lucky enough to have a kindergarten teacher, first-grade teacher, and third-grade teacher piloting FAWS. And Michelle Eugenio was part of the Science Committee. She's here tonight. Thank you, Michelle, for coming. She's very excited about FAWS being part of our school district. The black notebooks that are going around are from our third-grade class. And Mrs. Prentice, the teacher who's notebooks the classroom comes from, she really took it on and went full force with establishing those notebooks with the kids. And the kids describe themselves as scientists now, which is so exciting. And I also had the opportunity to go into a first-grade class as they were doing some hands-on experiments, and it was so clear how they learned the vocabulary and the concepts through the FAWS curriculum. So by the time I visited, they had already done their lab, and then they wanted to replicate what they had learned and demonstrate for me, and it was with amazing independence and, you know, highlighting vocabulary on the wall and using very, very high-level vocabulary. And again, like my colleagues who spoke tonight, children with special needs, English language learners, children with advanced academic skills, but it really leveled the playing field. So we're really excited about this opportunity in partnering with you. And we're very excited about the continued professional development that is, will be available. And then just one other thing from the Science Committee. The other piece is we got great feedback from our colleagues at the middle school and really talking about if the kids on an elementary level can come to the middle school masterfully writing in those notebooks. It's an indicator for more success in the middle school and high school level, so that's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Orfanos. So I open it up to any questions that you may have for myself or any of my friends.
I have a question. As far as PEBODY becoming a lighthouse district, is that something we need to request or work towards? Or how does that happen again?
Being a lighthouse, it was a bonus, Mrs. Dunn. We're very excited about it. And our teachers love to go see other teachers, but our teachers also love having other teachers coming in to see us. So once we... if we partner with FAWS, it's an added bonus for our district with more professional development, more consultants on-site to support us in our science journey.
They also said something about the fabulous superintendent that's here.
That too. That's part of the lighthouse.
That's part of the lighthouse.
Package planned, right?
That was understood.
Yes. Goes without saying.
Right.
But I thought I'd say it anyway. Through the chair.
First to Ms. Murtagh, thank you for empowering your teaching staff, your leaders, your principals. That's a true mark of who you are, a great leader. So thank you for making them part of the process and selecting FAWS. To the principals, teachers, thank you for allowing your kids to empower themselves by thinking outside the box, whether it's writing, whether it's drawing diagrams, whether it's coloring pictures in order to get the job done. And thank you, FAWS, for bringing this on. I think it's going to be a win for us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko.
Through the chair. Tom.
Thank you very much to the committee for putting all the time and energy and effort into finding a strong science curriculum. Through the chair, to the committee, would you say that the reason why you chose FAWS was the hands-on experience that this program provides over others?
So I do think that a lot of the programs that are out there now, we looked at several, do offer that hands-on. I think what really sets FAWS apart is that notebook piece and moving away from the workbooks and really thinking about how you talk about science and how you write about science in a very different way. That's something that was different from all of the other ones that we looked at. I don't know if you have anything to add?
It's inquiry-based. It's...
So part of the process was that we narrowed it down to finalists, and then we investigated even further. And the teachers who were piloting the two finalist programs were very vocal in the positives and the negatives about everything. But we really felt, I think the committee overwhelmingly felt, that FAWS offered something to PBD that was really unique. There were a couple of things. One was this hands-on piece. It was loud and clear, and especially, as I said, when the representatives came in to model lessons, we could see that. The kids were totally immersed in science. They weren't hearing about it, they weren't just looking at something or reading a text. They were doing science, and that was a huge piece, I think, for all of us. The other piece that was sort of stood out, I think, for all of us was the professional development piece. I've always felt that professional development is the key to student achievement and helping kids to be more successful in their learning. And FAWS has offered us a professional development piece that seemed to be missing in other programs, which is so important, so that we can continue and maintain what we're doing and keep growing as we become more and more scientific in all that we do.
Is there a sunset to how often FAWS will come back for re-educating staff?
If you're in agreement to this, that's our next step, but we do have certain things in place that we would like to see. And I talked about that monthly PD, and that's part of the lighthouse, but that's also part of our package.
For one school year... For one school year, or would it be more?
We can spread it out. We've talked about spreading it out.
Thank you.
Because it's not one and done.
Thank you.
Through the chair, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you. Thank you again to this committee, which I think was close to 30 people for about a two-year period.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of work, a lot of people. Thank you. Thank you so much for our students. Thank you, Ms. Murtagh, as Mr. Miko said, for empowering our educators and our administrators and the leadership that you've shown, not only on this committee, but on many projects that you've taken on in the last few years. Thank you to our staff and administrative and teaching staff, special education teachers, and so many of you who looked at so many different programs. I'm excited. I'm always excited when we get a presentation where our staff is excited with new textbooks or new curriculum, and it's evident how excited you are. So that always trickles down to students. When you're excited and enthusiastic and energetic, it trickles down, so that's great. With regard to this PD piece that Mr. Rosignol brought up and was part of the presentation, is that part of a contractual component? That's not something that's... is that, or is that just something that's a benefit that FAWS is offering gratuitously?
Oh, Brian. We're going to hear from Brian.
I'm Brian Gosic. I manage the eastern United States. Professional development is key to the implementation of this program. It allows for fidelity, and we embed it into the cost of the program. And whether it's year one or year three, we're there working with the teachers, with the administrators, to make sure that fidelity is ensured and to give them the support in any way that they need it.
Something that I wanted to add about the professional development is I'm really passionate about it because, like you said, is if the teachers... okay, my shirt's still tucked in, but no, it's not. So if the teachers are passionate about science, you're absolutely correct, students will be passionate about science. And if you look at those notebooks, the amount of writing that the students are putting in those notebooks really tells the whole truth there for that. And so our PDs are customizable in the sense that if it means we come in and model lessons like I did, because that will help teachers to be better at teaching the program, then that's what we do, and that's what we did do. And I look forward to being able to do that more because when teachers sit at a PD, and they, even though it's interactive, they get it, they feel it, and they know what needs to be done, but sometimes then transferring that in the classroom when now they have students in front of them is different. And so then having them watch someone else present while the students is doing what they need to be doing, to me, that's really powerful, and they can see. And I just want to tell you two quick stories when I did come in. One was in the kindergarten class, and they were looking at what happens to water when it gets on wood. And one student, they were learning how to use a magnifying glass, and they were looking at it, and one student just blurted out, so excited about that, "It magnifies." That's a kindergartner using the word "magnify." And then that other kindergarten was teaching another student how to use the hand lens correctly because they weren't quite using it. That's really powerful. And then in the third-grade class, when we were doing one on motion, we introduced the words as we talk about them, as we say them, as we do them. And I was looking through my cards of words, and I couldn't find the word "gravity," although I said the word "gravity." And one of the little boys in the back, he raises his hand and he says, "Miss D." And I said, "Yes," and he goes, "Here, I wrote the word 'gravity' for you on a piece of paper. Can I come and put that up?" That, and they spelled it right, they did... I mean, that just, I don't know, it still gives me goosebumps because that is what it's all about, right? They were able to not only say the word "gravity," they knew what it meant, they were able to write... to write it, and they wanted to put it up. And that's really what PD is. It's really about what makes sense for your teachers, but how is it going to impact us students is really the part where it plays the key role.
And when Roxanne is talking about that academic vocabulary, and and all of you teachers know, not everyone in your classrooms read at the same level, but the expectation is that they perform at grade level. So when they start with that investigation and that academic vocabulary is introduced through hands-on activities, when they then immerse themselves in the content, they already have an understanding of what that academic vocabulary is regardless of what their lexile level may be, of what their reading level may be, and what that does, it closes achievement gaps before the students ever enter the text, and it's extremely powerful, and most likely you will see a connection, a correlation between the implementation of Foss and increased ELA scores as well.
I just also wanted to make a comment about quality over quantity, and one of the other things that we saw, looking at both programs, the quality of the professional development that we got a glimpse, if this program is adopted from your company, was so impressive. That was a real marked difference. The energy that we saw in the room when we got to see the model lessons, everyone who observed was so excited, and the kids were excited too, so I think that has a big piece, as you said before, you can sit in a professional development and maybe want to be somewhere else. We didn't feel like that when Foss was presenting.
So through the chair, Mrs. Dunn, and then Mr. Hockman.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. My question is is one about looking through those notebooks and and actually, you know, having seen your presentation, those notebooks really are amazing, and you can actually tell, it sounds like the kids really are having fun, and getting them excited about science is paramount right now in this day and age, so I think it's going to be a wonderful program for everyone. One of the things I can see, you know, the teachers are excited about it too, and I did hear from several teachers about this program, and they they were very excited about it, they enjoyed the the experience of working with it, and it must have been, you know, some of the professional development you were doing, and in addition, doing it with their classes. But I also did hear from some other teachers who were, you know, a little hesitant, and I think that they were hesitant because of the hands-on component of this. And one of the things that I would really like to ask, and I'm going to make sure I run this through you, Dr. Levine, I want to make sure that if there are materials that are needed, or supplies, or any anything that a teacher needs, can we make sure that they all have it so that all of the students will benefit from all of the hands-on experiences that they can be exposed to through this program?
Through the chair, yes. The mayor has promised whatever money we need to buy whatever we need.
So the auto claim is on order, right?
Actually, we have kits that come with this program, and and maybe you could speak to the kits?
Oh, yes, I'm pulling over the thing, so I'm sorry.
Hold the mic closer.
Yes, these are the kits over here for each module, for each unit, each one. And everything that teachers need are in there. It's in there. So after, please feel free to come up and see everything that's in there.
And then those kits need to be replenished, so on a regular basis, we will be replenishing those kits and budgeting for that.
That's that's excellent. I think that's important on our end, to make sure that anything you need for this program, we make sure it's provided so that no one can say, "Well, I didn't have this," or "I ran out of that."
But this is every three years. There are three years of it. All supplies in there.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, no, thank you, and thank you for the segue, by the way, in joking about the mayor providing funds, in all seriousness, with all the hard work that went into this, this doesn't come into being unless Mayor Betancourt continues to show the leadership and the passion for our students and our staff and the education in the city of PBD by bringing this forward as a capital expenditure, something that we would not be able to absorb through our regular budget, and for advocating for this expenditure to the City Council, and thank you to the City Council for approving it. We couldn't do this without cooperation from everybody in the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that. It really is a true team approach at the leadership of the mayor. Brandy?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of my questions have already been answered. I I want to thank everyone for their time. I know, you know, it was a very long process, and I do appreciate it. I just have a question to the the company itself. Are you in any other school districts that are in our area, and have you seen any results from them, or?
So I have, there are schools in the area, not on the North Shore, but there, if you would like to reach out and talk to some of those schools, I can get you some names. Lowell Public School is in the process of adopting this, and at the, in August, they will have adopted K through eight, all three strands, and Paula Brandsford would be willing to talk with any of you if you'd like to get her a call. We're also in Arlington Public Schools, the Boston Public Schools, we are, we have pockets in the South Shore, Westboro, the Shova. So if, you know, I can give Kara a list of some people that you can talk to, we'd gladly do that for you.
How long have you been in, say, like, the Arlington and the Boston?
So with Next Gen, we're seeing a real resurgence. So we do have, I am, I've only been with the company eight months, so I can't give you strong numbers as far as, you know, we're in X amount of schools, but Foss has been around for 20 years, and we've had three different additions.
Our our authorship team is based in at Cal Berkeley in California, and we've been around now for almost three decades, and our largest users across the country, New York City, Los Angeles Unified, Oakland Unified, Chicago Public Schools, but we are across all demographics, whether it's rural, urban, suburban, and we've seen results across all demographics, and not just in science scores, but also the correlation between ELA and math, because we we embed those cross-curricular connections. I believe in the folders that we'll be leaving with each one of you today, we list some of those districts and also their results, their science scores as well as others from implementing Foss multiple over multiple editions in multiple years as well.
Mrs. Cavender?
I'll just take the folder. It sounds like my answers are in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Amico.
Through the chair, either to Ms. Merteg or someone from Foss. Can you elaborate on the online component? Is it, do students have an access to the text at home if they want to review, or, you know, maybe you can just elaborate on the online online piece with us.
Sure, I'll let Roxanne speak to that.
So the online piece, yes, students can access that at home as well as in school, and that is allows them, a teacher can choose the parts that the student would have, and then the teacher also can have online access at home, at school, or any place.
Through the chair, follow the chair. Are there any other questions? Then I would ask, as superintendent, through the chair.
Okay.
Can I just make one more comment? What Mrs. Dunn said sort of jogged my memory, and it was something that wasn't discussed yet here. The kids are asking for science because it's so hands-on, but I had a large number of parents come in on parent conferences and bring up the topic of science and say how their kids were coming home, explaining exactly what they were doing in school, without me mentioning science to the parents. They came in talking about science to me. So I think that speaks for the excitement of the children and the program itself.
Thank you. So I would ask for a motion to adopt Foss, the Foss Science Program, as recommended by Ms. Merteg and the Science Committee that has worked over the past two years.
Make the motion follow the recommendation of this country, Ms. Merteg and superintendent.
Second.
So there's a motion on the floor, seconded. Ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations to our fabulous teachers and administrators who served on this great committee. This is the role model for how things should be done, how things should be adopted. It's a hard, long, detailed process by experts in the field, our classroom teachers and our administrators, who who worked so hard to make this happen. This is the way we should look at every curriculum adoption. Thank you so much for your hard work. Thank you for your leadership, Ms. Merteg. Thank you, Foss, for your very professional and and helpful presentations and work with our teachers, and we look forward to a long and fruitful partnership. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm doing fine, so I don't know if you need it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You did. You did that pretty well, I gotta say. That was pretty good.
I practice it all the time.
They paint at the Oscars.
Terrific work. Thank you. Again, if there's no objection, we do have a guest that I wanted to bring up. Mr. Glenn Kucha from the Mass Association of School Committees is here at the request of the school committee to continue to discuss the school superintendent search, and, Mr. Kucha, if you could maybe come up and take a seat. Right in front. So Glenn, I want to thank you for being here. I do want to say, and I think all of you know this, but Glenn has been terrific to work with, the Mass Association of School Committees. His responsiveness, his knowledge, really assisted me greatly through the process. We certainly hit some speed bumps in the road during the course of of the process, but his responsiveness and his assistance throughout has been excellent, and I appreciate him coming here tonight. He's come here a number of times to discuss this with us, and again, the Mass Association of School Committees is not being paid for the work that they've done to us, only if we were to obtain a superintendent from with their assistance, and but yet still, he's been working very hard for us and trying to do the best he can for the city of PBD. I do appreciate that and wanted to state that. Mrs. Dunn, the request was made by you on behalf of the school committee. Did you want to kick things off if I turn it over to you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, actually, the reason that I requested that Mr. Kucha come in was because I had several questions to ask about the process, and I'll be honest, I'm coming from the point where I want to continue to work with MASC. I actually appreciated the way that you ran the process. I think it's a very, a very fair way. I like the fact that you went through the resumes, you you received those, that you, you know, that you went through, and then we got involved with the finalists. Some of my questions are really about the timing, and one of the things that I noticed was going through the packets of the finalists, many of them had letters of recommendation that were addressed in November, October and November, and that made me think, we had felt that it would be appropriate to start our search like in January, and timing is everything. And I know people who are applying for these jobs are working on a school year calendar, as are we, and that there is a good time for applications to be sought, and I'm wondering if it would be better for us to change the the actual calendar that we use this year and to begin our search in the fall. And the reason that I'm asking that now is because I think that if we get ready for that process, and we are ready to advertise in the fall, to accept applications in the fall, and then to have the process completed in the early winter, and I'm talking January or February, that that not only gives us the chance to get into that the the flow of people looking for jobs, but to be ready, and by being ready, I mean, we need to have a very definite, in my opinion, we need to have a very definite calendar, we need to go into this knowing which day we're going to interview candidates, you know, without regard to who they are. If they get picked as a finalist, they know, interviews are going to be on this day and this day, site visits will take place on this day, and that we move much quicker through the entire process of selecting a superintendent. So I had, you know, the the question about the calendar, I had the question about the the actual job description, and then I also had another question about online. I noticed that many of the schools that do work with you, Mr. Kucha, they also have a a brochure or a pamphlet prepared that can be sent out. I know candidates ought to know a lot about the city that, the city or town that they're applying to, but it did give very, a very professional air to those searches in the other communities, and I think that, again, if we start now, we'll be ready with something like that also, to be able to have that on file, on the MASC website, candidates can look at that, and it just kind of puts another added, just a little added weight to the the full, the full breadth of the PBD school system. There's a lot of good things going on here, and I think if we consolidate it into one of those pamphlets, that could also help to attract candidates as well. So that's my beginning, and I'm going to let you finish it.
Getting started earlier is a good idea. Now, you get started a little later, you got a good pool of candidates, you know, five of the people who applied for your position took superintendencies elsewhere. It's one of the reasons that, you know, by the time you guys were ready to go, they had been taking some of them days before you might have taken them. It was a rush to get to some of the the better ones. The best candidates did apply to PBD, and as you say, they got picked off earlier. So there's something to that. Starting, the districts that started earliest over the last few years got to pick soonest and took the best candidates out first. So that's a good strategy. If you started in September and aggressively pursued the timetable, you could have a decision made before the winter holidays and have your decisions all locked up and ready to go for the start of the next school year. And if you were to commit to that kind of process, regardless of how you did it, you understand, this is not rocket science. It's a matter of putting the posting up, letting the universe of candidates know that you're looking for a superintendent. The universe goes to two or three specific places to find out where those vacancies are. They do their own research about the community. Everybody knows PBD, Massachusetts.
Well, they should. It's the center of the universe, just so you know, Glenn.
Please, I came from Jersey.
Okay, let's get that clear.
But that, no, that's true. I mean, everybody knows PBD.
That's right.
Interesting sideline, if I can, you know, Winthrop is looking for a superintendency right now. Nobody knows where Winthrop is, which is interesting, because it's right next to Boston.
Yeah.
It's contiguous to the airport. It's a little town that just maintains its own low profile, and they're they're trying to sell themselves to to the universe for an interim superintendency. You don't have that problem. You don't carry any baggage, you don't carry any liabilities. It's a good superintendency, it's a good place to be. So you've got that going for you. The best candidates will apply for the PBD superintendency, no matter who is helping you and no matter what you do, but the sooner you get started, the more likely it is that more of them will be around when it comes time to making your decision. when it comes time to making your decision, instead of finding yourselves, you know, where you are now later in the year, without a pool of candidates remaining. So, you're right about that. But, that's a problem you can solve.
Okay.
And, by the way, as you can see, the amount of money you throw at the process is irrelevant to the quality of candidates you receive. Because you did receive, you got a good response. It's just that other districts moved more quickly and picked off the candidates.
Through the chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Sure.
I agree. You know, looking back at it, there were different impediments in timing, as far as when we unrolled our process. And, even within our own calendar, we were, a couple times, the weather truly impacted on several things. And, I think that trying to make our schedule, as we went along with the interviews and site visits and everything, I think that that held us back a bit. Again, that's my opinion in looking back at the process, but I do think that if we go into this with a very definite process, it might help a bit.
Let me say something else. The school committee elected to act as its own search committee, which meant that you did not have the ability to convene an executive session for the purpose of screening or interviewing your candidates. Surprisingly, that did not adversely affect the size of your pool.
That's good.
You know, there are candidates who will be reluctant to come forward unless they can be assured of a confidential initial screening, so as to give them some protection for public exposure. That did not appear to be a problem. I thought that was a very interesting phenomenon. All the candidates who were invited to interview initially accepted, and one of them withdrew because she elected to, took a better offer in her own district to stay there. But, everybody else did come, and your candidates put themselves out there and did not seem to be concerned about it.
That's good.
That, there's an ongoing debate about whether or not a search committee brings value, or whether a search committee creates an opportunity for special interests to affect the pool before the school committee gets to weigh in. So, I just thought that was an interesting observation I would make to you. Normally, people would say, you need a search committee because the best candidates won't expose themselves unless they can have some initial opportunity to be screened privately. Now, we can, we did that in this particular process, but every candidate who was invited to come forward did.
That is interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Spoke well of Peabody, actually, that there were, you know, people weren't.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to Mr. Kucha. Thank you, again, for appearing before us and assisting us along this process, and I echo the mayor's sentiments as far as how hard you and your organization have worked for us. It certainly, you clearly show the benefit of being a member of your organization. So, thank you very much. And with that, I'll start with by asking you, so, is it your opinion, as you're the director of the MASC, that at this point, as we're sitting here on May 9th, that the pool, that the universe, as you call them, of candidates that existed is no longer available for the school year starting in July of?
There are always people who are available, but I would say to you that the best candidates who have been available this year have been selected.
And, I think we can all agree that Peabody is a fairly large and complicated school district. So, with the best candidates not, no longer being available, I think that we're in the process, if we haven't already, of seeking a waiver due to the critical shortage that exists. And, it sounds to me that you're corroborating that thought, that at this point, this juncture, whatever procedural or timing issues that existed in the past, we would be hard-pressed at this point to find a qualified, suitable candidate to take over our school system in July.
I think you're correct. We do not seek the waiver.
No, no, I understand.
The district seeks the waiver.
I understand.
We provide technical assistance to the district in preparing that request.
And, again, I appreciate that. I was just looking at your expertise as the leader of the MASC, and I thank you for that. And, I do beg to differ with you. I appreciate the work that you did. I beg to differ with you in terms of the quality of the pool that came forward. Out of the six finalists that were interviewed, I think three have taken superintendencies, not five.
But, in the pool that applied.
Right.
Five have taken superintendencies.
But, we only have the benefit of seeing six of the nineteen. We didn't...
Oh, that's true.
Yeah. So, and frankly, I don't know that that speaks to the quality of the pool as much as it does to the lack of qualified candidates. But, we can debate that at another time.
No, I agree with you, that there are two issues at play here.
Yeah.
Not a lot of people want to be superintendents in this state at this time in this era.
Well, again, I agree with the thoughts that are being passed around tonight about starting earlier. I also agree with you about having a search committee, and so that those initial screenings are not public. I think that that may aid in the talent that would be willing to apply. But, we also were, as Ms. Dunn said, we were hampered by acts of God, if you will. I mean, there were two meetings that we had that we had canceled due to weather that pushed us back even further than we expected. So, but with that, thank you again for your service. I expect that we're going to be talking quite a bit in the near future, and ideally.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any other comments from the committee? I did want to make sure, two meetings ago, we discussed a number of action items for us, and I have not yet submitted the waiver request, and I just wanted to, I intend to do that this week. I did want to make sure that that was still the will of the council after, I know we wanted to have a meeting with the MASC and here, Mr. Kucha, but I just, I did want to ask the committee if that's still the intention of the committee to move forward with a, seeking a waiver request for the shortage. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that point, if I may, I, for one, and I think my colleagues on the committee would agree, that that waiver is something we would seek, and I would ask, to the extent that, not that Mr., well, I guess Mr. Kucha testified today, he spoke at a public meeting, that his opinion and being an expert in the field matters, and that we should put together for the commissioner, an action plan as to how we wish to proceed in the future, in terms of a superintendent search, so that we can show that we will continue to look for qualified candidates in the future, but at the present time and at this present date, there is no qualified candidate available due to a critical shortage. Qualified candidates have already been hired by other school districts, and we're in a position right now on May 9, 2017, where we deem the circumstances that we're in as a critical shortage.
Thank you. Mr. Hockman, would you make that in the form of a motion, if you would?
I move to adopt everything I just said.
Thank you. But, that is part of...
No, I do move, seriously speaking, I move to direct or request that the mayor seek and file a waiver due to a critical shortage from the commissioner of education from the Commonwealth, and within that waiver request, include our action plan for the future, as well as the opinion of an expert in public education. Mr. Kucha?
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, my Mr. Hockman seconded, my Mrs. Dunn. Before I go to a vote, Mr. Amico did have some comments.
Through the chair, Mr. Kucha. How many superintendents would you say the MASC has placed over the last couple of years?
In formal searches that we've done, we've averaged between eight and ten on searches. If you add technical assistance to districts, would be another half dozen a year, so, we're probably involved in fourteen to fifteen superintendent searches a year.
And, my point is, those, over the last two years, those superintendents, those candidates that would be under contract would not be available, so to speak, to the pool of candidates. And, as to what Mr. Hockman has mentioned, a critical shortage is in place, and one of the reasons is, and so, over the last couple of years, you guys have placed so many superintendents and it further deepens that, or I should say, shortens that pool of candidates out there.
Yes, and I would say on the record what I've said to the state, which is that if we're not for the critical shortage system, we would not be able to fill all the superintendencies that become vacant during various times of the year.
Thank you.
And, I will, I'm just very emphatic about that. And, I would also say this, you have to understand, for those people who object to the concept of the critical shortage waiver, every community, every school district has to have a superintendent. Whether your superintendent is your incumbent acting as an interim or a new person coming in as the superintendent, it will make no fiscal difference to the city of Peabody, or to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the state pension system. It's just an opportunity for us to be able to have professional, experienced superintendents leading at a time when public education is under assault at the state and federal level. And, we're better off trying to get the waivers and bring experienced people in than to take our chances with people who have never been superintendents, or who want to give it a shot and see if they can make it at your expense, as articulate as some of those people may be.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mr. Rosignol and Mr. Olympia?
Thank you. Through the chair. Glenn, that was very well put, and I appreciate your sentiments. What would you say is the average length of stay for a superintendent right now in the state of Massachusetts?
It's about four and a half years, and that term limit is largely due to retirements. You understand, in Massachusetts, if you're fifty-seven, fifty-eight years old, you can retire at a full pension, and people will, people just want to go. And, that's as much as ten years sooner than people used to retire. So, the pool's small.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mr. Olympia?
Through the chair. Thank you so much, Glenn, for all your help. I really appreciate it. Does the state, in your experience, give pushback to, do they say, have you looked at candidates that, let's say, that live out of state, that might want to come back to the, say, New England area? Do they, do you get that kind of pushback?
Yes. A district looking for a waiver needs to explain to the state how you have ruled in or ruled out other candidates.
Because, let's say, there could be candidates out there that are living in Connecticut, New York, that might want to come back to, you know, the Boston area, and is that something that they question?
They might, but the ones who do.
Yep.
Are the retirees who want to come back for an encore career.
Okay.
There tend not to be many of them, and they tend not to be successful, because everybody thinks they're unique, but in Massachusetts, the complexity of the system, the unusual nature of the financing, the state chapter seventy system, the notion of the school district being a department of municipal government, which is unusual in the United States, makes out-of-state candidates few and far between.
Okay. No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Olympia. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Kucha. I really appreciated your guidance through the process. And, you know, I think we all kind of got beat up a little bit because we didn't end up with a new superintendent, and I think a lot of the sentiments that have been echoed tonight explain why, and I hope people realize exactly what it was that we went through and that what we're looking for, and it is very complex. And, we are in a unique position, and I'm very grateful that we're able to have Dr. Levine here, so that we can find the right person for the job. With that being said, the application of the waiver in the motion does state that we will have an action plan moving forward, which is where I'm really concentrating on now. I was very happy with the process that we went through. I know that sometimes when you select a screening committee, you can say that it gives opportunity for special interests. I think that you can be accused of having special interests either way you do it. I don't think that we could have been any more transparent in the way that we did it, and it just, the way that it came out is the way that it came out. We were a little too late. I am very much in favor of beginning this process. You know, I heard the September date thrown out there. You know, what is a really good, realistic date for us to, in my opinion, put the same exact ad, do the same exact process? What do you think would be a good time to start?
Get your advertisements out around Labor Day.
Yep, September 8.
Close at the end of September. Start your initial interviews in early October. Get them done, and be ready to have finalists by the end of the month.
Have you ever had a district put an ad out in September?
Oh, yeah.
You have?
Oh, yeah.
Has that district put an ad out in September that had a screening committee, or just...
No, they, most of them have used screening committees. So, if you wish to have a screening committee, a search committee, you just make it clear to the search committee, and this is very important, that we're going to have a search committee of a manageable size, not twenty-five people, but closer to nine or eleven, that every member of that search committee needs to commit themselves to being available in the first three weeks of October for meetings to do their initial screening and interviews, and that they will be prepared to commit to having their recommendations to the school committee by the end of October. Now, the problem that you get with search committees is that you get the group together and say, "Well, welcome to the search committee. What nights can you meet?" And, somebody says, "Well, of course, I work in Boston, I can't get here before since thirty on any night, and I'm commitment, I have a commitment on Tuesdays." And, someone else says, "Well, I have family responsibilities, I'm not available on weekends." And then someone says, "I'm going away the week of Columbus Day for a long planned vacation." And, the next thing you know, it takes you six weeks to get the interviews done. So, if you have a disciplined timetable for the search committee, and you move deliberately, and they know that you mean business, you can expedite that process quickly as well. The other issue regarding search committees is that sometimes, depending upon who's on them, they tend to do what's best for them and not what's best for the district. So, and I don't want to offend anybody in this department, I don't want to offend anybody at all specifically, but I'm going to suggest to you that insecure administrators are the wrong people to have on search committees. Special interest constituencies who can't change their mind and can't change the subject are not people you want on search committees. People with agendas and difficult people who can't compromise are not who you want on search committees.
Right. And, with all of those things being said, I am still in favor of doing the process exactly as we had done it before, but with a different timeline. So, after this motion is made, I would suggest that we make a motion, so that we can complete that motion and show that we have an action plan.
Okay. Mr. Rosignol, motion?
With that timeline that we're talking about, that you had just mentioned, Mr. Kucha, you're looking at having a candidate, let's say, November or December, to start in July, correct?
Yes.
So, with that said, how does the superintendent then go back to his district for the remainder of the school year? Because, to me, that's a long timeframe to go back to a school district, at least in my experience, that we've had in the past.
Actually, if you make a decision in December, the candidate who is leaving another district... the candidate who is leaving another district, if it's a superintendent, gives that district plenty of time to respond. If it's an assistant superintendent or a significant administrator, they have plenty of time for their district to recruit and mentor a successor in place.
Thank you. Okay, we have a, Mrs. Dunn, on the motion?
It's on, it's a different issue.
Different topic. Okay. We have a motion that was made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote?
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko? Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Go to you, Mrs. Dunn, and I know Mrs. Carpenter wanted to make a motion as well. Mrs. Dunn?
Okay. One of the things that I had prepared for tonight was a timetable. And I would like to bring that forward. I've adjusted it as Mr. Kuchar has spoken, but I do believe that we need to begin this in September, be very firm on our dates, and have this completed by December. I'm, I'm also going to go on record, I, I look to MAS C to serve as the screening committee. I liked the way that this process went. I think that it kept a lot of the very issues you just discussed out of the process. And to me, that's very important. I want to make sure that this entire process is transparent and above board. And having participated, or at least seen, other searches, not just for superintendent, but for principals and everything else, it, the whole process could get bogged down in the search committee process. And it is a very, very time-consuming and very difficult procedure based on the very things that you just spoke about, Mr. Kuchar. Even though we were not able to find a superintendent recently, the process, in my opinion, was still very viable, very good process, and I'd like to see that happen again. So what I have here is that the post, we post the position September 8th, that the position closes on October 6th, that we give MAS C two weeks to look through those, to submit candidates to us, and that we would begin interviews the week of October 23rd and 30th. That gives us two weeks for interviews. We can schedule interviews. We could schedule site visits. We would be working through November, and then in December make a decision.
I would start a week earlier with the interviews. If your applications are going to be in on the 6th, the school committee should be ready to receive candidates within a week from that date.
Okay, so you don't need two weeks. One week is fine? Perfect. That's even better.
I'm also suggesting you want to get the, yeah, that's better.
Okay, so that would be the week of the 18th. I'm sorry, the 16th.
And then the week after that is the week of the?
23rd.
23rd.
And then the 30th. I'm going by Mondays.
And then once those interviews are completed, you could do your post-interview reference and resume checking, and you could conceivably conduct second interviews or move to a decision prior to the end of November. There's plenty of time to get it done, but I thought you'd get it done soon, before Thanksgiving.
Right. And that's, that's what I would propose.
In the form of a motion?
Yes.
Motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Mrs. Carpenter, are you content with that?
I was hoping she would just, yep, she had her all down.
Excellent. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Dunn, for providing us with the framework for what we hope, we all hope to be a successful superintendent search. I agree with the timeline. I still disagree with having MAS C as the screening committee. I think it does limit the pool of candidates. And I'd like to discuss now, rather than later, since we're talking about the timeframe, how many candidates we move forward. I would like to point out that if we had pulled three candidates from the pool MAS C provided, we would have, we would have avoided one of those snow days and would have had an opportunity to select a superintendent potentially quite a bit earlier than the, after the second interview took place in this process. I think we would have been able to select someone at least two to two and a half weeks earlier if we had three candidates come forward, had one, met them all on one night like we did in this process. We met three candidates and interviewed them on one night, and been able to do site visits if we chose to. And perhaps, I don't know if we would have, but perhaps had a greater opportunity to offer or negotiate with someone for a position. I still believe six is too much. I think, I thought five was too much. But I would like to talk about that, and maybe it's in the form of another motion after this. But to the point of the timeline, I agree with the timeline. I disagree with MAS C being the screening committee. I think that we can very easily overcome the hurdles that, that Mr. Kuchar identified by carefully selecting the people on the screening committee, keeping it small as he suggested, and just simply establishing the meeting dates before the selection of those people and ask them if they're able to meet on those days and at those times. And if they're not, simply replace them before they even get on the screening committee. So for those reasons, I am not able to support Ms. Dunn's motion, although in principle, I think, absolutely agree with the timeline that you set out.
Thank you. Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Hockman. I look at it as three separate issues. First issue is the timeline. That, that is what Ms. Dunn proposed, is the timeline. So I think that is one issue. The second issue is whether we go through the same process that we did last time or whether we do a, a search committee. And then the third issue is how many candidates. So I think we're going to need three different motions, to be perfectly honest with you. I think the first motion that's on the, on the floor right now is valid, and it sets up a concrete timeline, and I, and I think it's appropriate. I think what we're going to need following that would be another motion to whether we're going to go with MAS C solely or whether we're going to have a subcommittee of the school committee doing a, a search committee. And then lastly, is how many candidates we take either one to move forward to us.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol.
That's the process moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mr. Hockman, do you want to?
Yeah, just on that point, and maybe I misheard, Ms. Dunn, I thought that her motion incorporated using MAS C as a screening committee, and if I misheard that, I apologize. I agree with Mr. Rosignol that they're three separate issues. And if, if the motion is solely for the timing, I am absolutely in favor and will support that.
Would you, Mrs. Dunn, would you have it as a, just establishing the timeline right now?
Yes, I would. And I'll be honest, that was the intent of my motion. But if we make that decision, we're already going to have to change that timeline. Because if you're going to have a search committee go through, I don't know how many applications would come in, that's already going to put us a few more weeks back from the date of the closing. That's why I, you know, I'm looking at that schedule, trying to keep it as tight as possible. And I think in order to stick to the schedule I've proposed, we would have to use MAS C as the screening committee because if we have to put, say, 30 resumes in front of 10 people, or nine people, I don't think that they would be able to do that in one meeting. And then that puts us back probably another week. And then if they're going to, if they're going to do any background research on those people that they look at as the frontrunners, well, now we're pushing it back again. And, you know, consultations back and forth that they may have with MAS C is going to... So the timeline is already off. So my timeline is based basically on MAS C doing the screening.
All right, well, it's your motion, Mrs. Dunn. Do you want to keep it as?
Yeah, I'll keep it that way.
With, so the motion would be to establish the timeline with MAS C as the screening committee?
Yes, I guess I'll have to leave it like that, yeah.
Okay, so that motion's been made. It was seconded. Still on the motion. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, if I can, through you to Mr. Kuchar. Are we be able to utilize the services of MAS C as an assistant or a part of the screening process?
Yes.
In other words, if we had a screening subcommittee that was developed, and you were doing that as Ms., and, and I think Ms. Dunn's right, there's a lot of work that goes into a screening committee for superintendent search. But are you able to do that background look, that, that Google search, I think you said, or looking, looking into candidates and?
Well, yeah, the, the initial stuff that gets done before a preliminary interview. When we do that, we do it for the screening committee, or, or do it on our own, depending upon whichever model you use.
So through the mayor again, to Mr. Kuchar. For example, if there were 30 applicants that submitted paperwork for this position, would we be able to utilize MAS C to, say, narrow that down to 10 and then give it to a search committee before it came to a public interview?
You could.
And, and I don't know, through the mayor to Ms. Dunn, I don't know if that?
Nope.
Yeah, no, we'll keep your motion the way it is. But I mean, I think that there are alternatives available. And I just do like having a first blush at some pool prior to bringing them out in the open. I think that enhances the quality of the pool that we're going to get. I don't think somebody, well, you know my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Hockman. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Kuchar mentioned, he believes we did everything right. It was just our timetable. So I, from my point of view, I don't think we need to do anything drastic, make too many changes. I just think we need to get at it a little bit earlier. And I'll go with his recommendation, as he did mention.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Olympia?
Just real quick, I feel the same way. I'll be in support of Ms. Dunn's motion. I just think that having a search committee is not the way. I mean, Mr. Kuchar just stated that he did not feel like that was the problem. And I would actually put more faith in Mr. Kuchar than the search committee that we would, you know, put together. It's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
No.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Did we want to, I, I think we're setting the, the timeframe. I think we should probably make a decision as to that remaining item. I'll turn it to you, Mr. Rosignol.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think if we narrowed down the candidates to three, now that we're going through the process the same as we did before, I think narrowing the candidates down to three would hamper us. I think we need to keep it at five like we had beforehand. If we kept it to three, I'm going to respectfully disagree with Mr. Hockman, we might not have had anybody by the end. So since we've decided on the process that we're going to go by, I'm going to make a motion that we stick with the five candidates to come before us. So moved.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol for five candidates to be recommended, seconded by Mr. Miko. Any comments?
I would just say, because I'm going to vote no, that my thoughts on the subject are already stated.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Miko, did you want to?
Through the chair, the committee, and I do agree with Mr. Rosignol. Even initially on that, that search, I, I was one who was thinking maybe only three or four candidates. And if that were the case, we wouldn't have had anyone at the end, as they were scooped up. So I, I would even consider five to six as we get, as we get in the house.
Motion on the table. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Great. I think we have a game plan in place. Thank you. Mr. Kuchar, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go back to the school committee agenda. Actually, we're going to go back to the approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve minutes for April 25th, 2017, regular school committee meeting.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol for approval of the April 25th, 2017, regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Hockman.
One correction.
On, on the motion, correction, Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, on, sorry, moving too fast, Mr. Mayor. Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry. It's on page seven, and it's under new business. It's the last paragraph. And the sentence is, "Mrs. Dunn suggested scheduling a time to meet with MAS C." It was actually a time to meet with our legislative delegation.
You got that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. With that correction, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of bills, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3433, dated May 9th, 2017, in the amount of $269,329.29, subject to audit.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number 3433, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3435, dated May 9th, 2017, in the amount of $547,083.34, subject to audit.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant B, number 3435, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next item, continued business. Mrs. Dunn, any report on the MSBA Higgins Project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The MSBA Higgins School Building Committee meeting was held, I want to see, on April 27th, here at the Higgins. And the topics discussed were primarily, primarily about the Phase 2. And we discussed the seeding of the new fields, the paving of the new roads and the parking areas, as well as work that's going on right now. So if you noticed, you'll see some changes in the dirt, and we're talking about dirt. And they are putting down the soil that's needed to be able to start planting. So many of the, not, not just the grass seed is coming in, but some of the trees, the shrubbery, and all of the landscaping is going to be done over the next several weeks. Everything, of course, in something like that depends upon the weather. The weather has been cooperative, knock on wood. They were trying to get the grass seed in this past week. And I don't know if they were able to because of the weather, but they are working to get that done. The roads are being paved, and again, they won't be open to the public until the site is completed. But people will see some big changes coming along very shortly. The drainage on the site is almost completed. Again, they have worked to get that all done. If you, if you look out there, the pile of rocks gets smaller and smaller every day. They don't add to it very often now. And things are going along very well. If you approached the site tonight, you will probably notice that the electronic sign was on out front. And that's, that's good as well. They are going to be addressing several of the issues around, you know, just trying to work through some of the things that, with a new project that they have to. For example, out front, the, the growth on the hill, that's going to be addressed. They're checking all the drainage on this site. Everything is fine so far, but they want to make sure that that's all okay. And everything on the punch list, the punch list gets shorter and shorter every time we have a meeting. So our next meeting will take place Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, May 18th, here at the Higgins, at 4:00 p.m. It's always open to the public. Everyone's welcome to attend, and hoping for good weather.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. As always, thank you for your report and for your work. As always, thank you for your report and for your work. For kids only, after-school program and before-school program, any update to report, Dr. Levine?
Yep, we met last week. Everything went very well, very productive meeting, they've had a very good year. They have received their grant for the summer, their summer program is well underway, being planned, and we're very hopeful that all will go as well as it has in the past ten years that they've been with us, and I'm sure that they will. If I may, I mean, we can wait until superintendent's report, but it would be appropriate for me to ask for a vote to extend... your mandate to me was to evaluate their program this year, and to make a recommendation to you as to whether or not to extend for kids only by a year. I am making that recommendation.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Down the line a little bit, in your superintendent's report, you have... or is it under written communications? Written communications. You have a letter for for kids only to submit a grant for the 21st Century... is that the same grant that they have already for the Welch?
Through the chair, it is the same grant, but the Welch stays as it is, this is an additional grant, and it would be for the center school.
And the details of that grant, could you just explain it, just to refresh some of the numbers?
So, the 21st Century grant is a major grant of some $300,000, I believe, over three years, that gives whatever school is lucky enough to get it, extended opportunities for a variety of different activities that otherwise could not be funded, including academic tutoring, and extended play, and more kids being available to take that program free of charge. And with the center school's demographics changing, it's very appropriate for the center school, and we hope that we get it.
Through the chair, Dr. Levine, is this the same grant... and I ask this where this is a wonderful opportunity for those students, but is this the same situation whereas in the Welch, if they get this grant, we will no longer be collecting any type of funds from for kids only for the use of our building?
Only for those... it's a two-part question. Only for those kids that are accepted under the grant at no charge. So, there will be other kids in the building that are still... well, actually, we don't pay by the kid anymore, we don't collect by the kid anymore. I don't know the answer to that question. I will find that out. There is at the Welch, under this grant, a quid pro quo, that because we're getting an extra $300,000 over three years, that we will not charge fees for the use of the building, and I would assume that that will be the same, but I'll find that out.
So, given the fact that, you know, we have such a difficult budget coming up, and we have a lot of cuts to make, and, you know, as I said before, this is a wonderful opportunity for the kids in that building, they still pay a fee, correct, to for kids only?
Through the chair, yes, that is the case. They do not... the kids who are under the grant pay zero. The state will reimburse for kids only a certain number of kids that are under that grant. Keep in mind that we don't pay by the facility anymore, and we don't pay by the kid. We get paid in a lump sum under contract, and that will stay the same. So, the income to the school system, whether or not we get this grant, will not change.
Okay, so what I understood was, through the Welch, because they got the grant, everyone who's at the Welch qualifies. It's not just a certain select kids, it's anyone in that building, and because of that, we collect no money from the Welch. So, my question is, will this happen at the center, and if so, how are we going to make up those funds, and how much money and funds is it?
We no longer... we're no longer charged per pupil, that was the old formula.
Right.
We charge... it was actually the mayor's request that we charge a lump sum, so we didn't have to chase per pupil. We've been doing that for the last couple of years. So, whether we get this grant or not, it will not change the lump sum that we have agreed to, it will remain the same.
I understand what you're saying, I'm just concerned that it will change, just because of the way that the grant will be written, because the way the contract's written with us through them, it lists all of those elementary schools, and I think we excluded the Welch so that they could have that grant. And I'm just concerned about how the contract will have to be written going forward with for kids only in regards to this grant, because I think we had to exclude the Welch.
Through the chair, I will find out the details, but once again, I would say to you that by simply extending the contract that we have, it will be for the same amount of money, it will not change. So, we're doing an overall... we're charging for an overall ability to use our facilities, whether it's three or six, and we never negotiated if they got another 21st Century grant, that that would decrease, the money that they give us would decrease, so I would expect it wouldn't. Remember, we have, I believe, a three-year contract, but it needs to be rolled over every year, so the tenants of that agreement will not change, regardless of whether or not we get the 21st Century grant.
I understand what you're saying, I would just be more comfortable if we could just double-check, and I would like to look at the contract again and maybe get a little bit more clarification. If the motion goes through, and it does, that's fine, I would just be more comfortable if we held off one more meeting.
Through the chair, I have no problem holding off one more.
Mr. Rozignol and Mrs. Dunn.
Through the chair, just to Mrs. Carpenter's point, are you saying hold off on the motion to roll over our current contract, or hold off on a motion to accept them going for 21st Century grant at the center school?
Both.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
I have two questions. The first one, actually, through the chair to Mr. Stanton. In our warrant, we have a payment of $818 to for kids only, could you tell us what that's for?
I'm sorry?
It goes to me, through the chair. You might have to clarify me, we were offsetting some costs?
What was the question?
In the warrant, in today's warrant, there was a charge for $818, where we were paying that to the for kids only program, and I just wondered why we were paying them.
We actually added a one-to-one aid for a short period of time, for a student who otherwise would not be able to participate in the program because of his behavioral issues. I've been involved with this child for two years, and I feel very strongly that his participation in FKO is critical to his continued socialization process. So, we were able to find somebody, and for a relatively short period of time, and a short number of dollars, we agreed to put somebody on to be with this student. The student needs a one-to-one in order to participate in this program.
Okay, thank you. The other issue that I want to bring up is, the contract is for three years, and if we are not going to go up in the amount of money that we charge on that contract, our costs are going up. And it actually became very apparent when we were listening to the school improvement plan presentations, and I had asked a question to Ms. Smith, I believe, about the computer lab at the Carroll School, and she explained that those computers are really on their last legs, and that they get quite a bit of use by the FKO program. And it made me think that if we are utilizing the equipment for that program, and we are incurring costs from this program, at some point, we really do need to look at what we charge that program for the use of our facilities and our equipment. And I don't mean to diminish the work they do, I know they do a lot of really good work with the kids, but it actually is impacting on us schools, because sometimes after-school activities, such as scouts, they have to be adjusted because of the FKO program. One of the things that had come up when we were negotiating that contract was, and I remember being very firm about it, was that they needed to remember that they are working with us, and that those are our schools, and that they may need to adjust their program to accommodate our needs. And I wanna make sure that that's happening now, because I don't wanna see anything that our school community wants being pushed off because FKO is using a specific area in a specific building or specific equipment. It worries me, and I wanna make sure that that is reiterated to the FKO program. They're guests, they're good guests, they're working with us, but they need to realize that there are a lot of uses for our schools, and we all have to kinda work together to accommodate those uses.
Through the chair, and I know that there are other school committee folks that wanna jump in. May I make a suggestion that I will have in your packet the FKO contract for your perusal for the next school committee meeting?
That would be a good thing.
So that can be discussed openly at the table.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you. Could you also just provide the 21st Century grant, and what that entails, and if that has any differences in what we can or cannot provide to FKO?
Through the chair, I'll be happy to do that. So, actually, I'll get a copy of that grant, and I'll put that in your packet as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Just, Mrs. Dunn's had pointed out the $818 for kids only. Dr. Levine, I just wanna applaud you for taking that step to ensure that that child had after-school care, and that you found someone to help facilitate his needs with for kids only. With that being said, I do recall that one of their selling points was that they provide one-on-ones with some students, special education services, that they wouldn't turn away anyone, and it was at their cost. So, I just wanna remind them that that was something that was promised to us, even though I would never want this child to not have those services, but that was a very big selling point, something that parents reached out to me to say they specifically needed for kids only because of the special educational needs or behaviors that their child had, and for kids only was the only one who would reach out and get them extra staff.
I would like to respond to that, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing that up. This year has been a unique year because of the before-school program. And quite frankly, if you remember, when we discussed the before-school program, I believe the number was twenty that FKO used in order to have a viable program that actually provided them some relative profit. They've been operating the... at all of the schools, with one exception, the before-school program at significantly fewer than twenty. They've been doing that because they wanna see the program succeed, they wanna be a partner with us, and we're hoping next year, after having a year of offering this program, that we'll do a better job at selling it and marketing it, and more people will sign up for it. So, that being said, I believe that in some ways, they've operated at a bit of a loss this year. We... I felt we had to be a little bit more cooperative with them, although they never asked for it. I offered it, because it happened kind of late in the year, there was a meltdown, there was some indication as to whether or not it would be a safe environment without a one-on-one, and I said, "I will provide that person if we could find one," because you know how hard it was for us to find paraprofessionals this year. We were lucky enough to find somebody who was qualified to and willing to be a one-on-one to this young man, and that's worked out very well. So, I think that you raise a very good point, but in this particular year, it's been a little tougher for FKO because of the before-the-bell program, and their cooperation in running all of them, even though most of them fell below the twenty, some significantly, and we'll see what happens next year. So, I thought defraying the cost of this one-to-one aid was the right thing to do.
And I do trust you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockman and Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I... just on the point Ms. Carpenter just raised, I think I know the student, I know the difficulties that were presented with this particular student, and there were some concerns about not only that student, but other students in the building, and their well-being and safety. I think FKO has continued to exhibit that they're not just tenants, they're not just people that use our buildings, they provide a service that after the presentations we saw last year when we asked, when we had an RFP, that we're not able to provide, that other organizations aren't able to provide as well, which is why we selected FKO to continue in a partnership. And they do pay us, we... the mayor and the superintendent renegotiated a contract that was a bad contract, I think, for us originally, into a good contract for us, and it provides for a lump sum lease of space, and I think that there's even, even though I was opposed to it, a provision in the contract that does allow for counting heads or paid per pupil, whichever is greater. So, there's no reduction in... and we'll look at the contract before our next meeting, and we'll talk about it, but, you know, FKO's been, in my opinion, and it's probably only my opinion, treated with some level of hostility that I don't think is warranted. They provide a service to a lot of families, to a lot of students. This 21st Century grant allows for the Welch School, which is approximately ninety percent below poverty, to have not only after-school care for kids that would otherwise be latchkey, a lot of them, that would go home to either be by themselves or with siblings who aren't capable of properly caring for them. It allows them to stay in a program that ensures that they do their homework, that they continue on their educational plan, that their IEPs, if they have one, are followed. And more than that, there's enrichment programs that are now afforded to these kids that wouldn't otherwise... they wouldn't otherwise be exposed to because of a $300,000 grant that the Commonwealth is smart enough to provide. It's not to hurt school districts, it's not to hurt our buildings. I bet, you know, the mayor, excuse me, the superintendent and his budget that he put forward tonight is bleak as those figures were, there was still a provision for $25,000 for library books. It's not because we put books on the shelves in libraries not to be used, it's because we want kids to pick those books off of the shelves and read them. So, if the kids are getting extra instruction by utilizing our hardware and computer labs, good for them, they should be utilizing them. And if we need to at some point look at a capital plan to replace those items, that's on us, we should look to replace them. I want every computer in every school to be worn out, because kids from K to five are using them, as opposed to them just sitting there after 3:00, dormant, and kids are home in front of a television set, or by themselves, or wondering when Mom or Dad or whoever their caregiver is coming home. We've been hostile towards this organization too long. They provide a good, quality service, we get what we bargained for, we get rent. That's all we did, is we leased out space to a private organization, and they provide a service that we can't otherwise provide. We don't treat any other private provider like we've treated FKO in the last two to three years.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Dr. Levine, I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Levine, because when you brought up the fact about the before-school activities, that did make it much clearer about the relationship with the FKO and the contract. And I would like to address some comments from my colleague, because since he addressed the comments I brought up, I meant no hostility towards FKO in any way, shape, or form, and I actually resent the characterization that way. I brought this up in a strict business sense, like I would bring this up about anything else. So, with that, I will thank you again, Dr. Levine, because I do appreciate what you had said earlier. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public participation. Anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, the microphone is open. Thank you. Superintendent's report, there are a few remaining items, Dr. Levine, if you could touch on, please.
Thank you very much. The... I would once again ask for a motion to approve the establishment of the capital fund at the North... fund at the Northeast Consortium. I did get the answer to two questions that you asked, Mr. Hockman. First of all, only the board can add or take away money from that fund, not the state. The state has no entree. And you asked a question about how long it might take for us to reach the 650, and the CEO in charge of business there suggested four to six years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Second.
Prefer the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico, to follow the recommendation of the superintendent. On the motion, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine. You said there was going to be a four-year capital improvement project?
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Hockman had asked how long it might take to reach the maximum number of dollars that was voted as a capital fund ceiling. And the CEO suggested four to six years it would take for us to put enough money in to be at the max.
So you're going to be looking for this for the next four years?
No, one, through the chair. Once the capital fund is established, it's established. And the board will decide how much money, if any, goes in every year to pay for capital projects that any of us would have who own and manage buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hockington?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hiring, yeah, the hiring report is the hiring report. We're in pretty good shape. We should be. It's the end of the year. I'll just, I think, I think that's it. I did want to publicly thank, you have the Higgins moving on ceremony schedule, and thank you to Todd and his people for working diligently on that in a very quick fashion. And I wanted to thank DA Blodgett, who always makes certain that he has very appropriate and smart words for the community as we approach prom season. And I think it's incumbent upon me, as superintendent of schools, to remind the community that it is illegal to allow underage drinking in anybody's home. Just because you're in a home doesn't mean that it's legal. Anybody who gets hurt or sick at a party of an adult and they're underage, you are responsible. And people have gone to jail. People have lost their homes. People have suffered tremendously for making an error in judgment and thinking that it's okay to do so. Please, I implore you, do not allow underage drinking parties, regardless of the activity and the celebrations that will be going on in your homes. They are unsafe and they are illegal. Thank you. With that, I am through with my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Levine. Okay, next item, we do have three written communications that have been submitted. Any comments on those? Those can be received. And subcommittee reports. Education, Mr. Hockman, anything to report?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Coppender, anything? School safety, Mr. Olympio?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr.?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing at this time.
Liaison to city council and advisory boards. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting of the parent advisory board will take place Monday, May 22nd, at 7:00 PM at the PBD Learning Academy. And looking forward to that meeting. It would be nice for the parents to see the Learning Academy and actually get, they're going to be, Mr. Bedard, he's going to give us a tour, and he'll speak to the parents about the program. And I also think Mr. Olympio has, oh, I'm sorry, has a separate line now.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Sorry. Sorry. Building and grounds, Mr. Amico? Special education, parent advisory board, Mr. Olympio?
Yes, thank you. I will be scheduling formally a meeting on May 31st, that's Wednesday, at 7:00. I'd like to have it here at the Higgins, and I would like to invite Ms. Grooby and CPAC to attend Special Education Parent Advisory Board, and I'll be letting parents know as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Olympio. Before we break, a couple of items. Outstanding events celebrate the educational system here in our city that I just wanted to announce and invite anybody that would like to attend. First is our George PBD Medal Ceremony, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, May 17th. It's 5:30 at the library, and we're honoring our top eight students with George PBD Medals. Wonderful ceremony at the Sutton Room. Also, Thursday, May 18th, at City Hall at 6:00, the PBD Education Foundation is honoring five outstanding educators with the PBD, George PBD Legacy Awards. An outstanding event in which we've honored a number of educators, people who have given so much to our community over the years, and that's a wonderful event as well. Anybody who's interested or has any questions, please contact City Hall or the school administration office for questions on those two events. But two wonderful events that I know all of us greatly support here on the school committee. With that, if there's anything further, the next agenda will be handled in the regular course. I did want to ask, we have a school committee budget meeting set up for next Tuesday evening. I wanted to see if we should block off Wednesday as well to continue that discussion. Clearly, there's much to discuss regarding the budget, and I wanted to see if we should block off Wednesday night also. Mrs. Dunn?
If you do, it will have to be after the George PBD Medal Ceremony.
Oh, the one that I just announced?
Yes. Easy to catch you here than to try to get you on the phone and tell you what happened.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. That was a very intelligent move by, on my part.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that might work, because that ceremony should be over by 6:30.
Yeah, if you put the meeting at 7:00.
Yeah, that is, that is a very quick ceremony. That lasts no more than an hour. How about if we had the meeting at 6:45? Give it an hour, I know a number of us will be there. And then we can have it 15 minutes later, too. So how about we do 6:45 on Wednesday, May 17th?
Here?
Here.
6:45, okay. Are you driving?
Yes. Yeah, I think, no, let's have it here. Both, yeah, both, Tuesday. Do we schedule a time for Tuesday, 6:00? We do 6:00 on, all right, so let's make sure I get that right. Before I schedule, 6:00, Tuesday, May 16th, and then Wednesday, May 17th, 6:45, both here. Okay? Most adjourned. Thank you.